I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Forsythe.
Here.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Khan.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Thank you all. The first item of agenda is the items from the audience. Speakers have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. According to the council's Rules of Procedure, testimony on quasi-judicial matters must be presented during the public hearing and cannot be presented during items from the audience. Testimony regarding the Redmond Flex Project will only be accepted tonight during the public hearing. And we have three people signed up tonight for in-person public comment, we have one person online, and then we also have -- any written comments have been distributed to the council. So we will start with our in-person people. We have Alex Zimmerman, then David Morton, then Ari Hoffman. Yes, please.
Who support Iranian Muslim in Hamas butchers. My name Alex Zimmerman, I'm president of Stand Up America. I want to explain to you right now, give you information what is absolutely critical. So I'm involved in election in Bellevue, candidate consul three. So what's happened after election is very interesting. We have a junta right now in Bellevue, and I explain to you why. Hundred thirty-five thousand people in Bellevue not support election, not support candidate, from hundred fifty thousand. So what has happened with this ten fifteen, approximately ten fifteen thousand people who represent a democratic base? You know what it means? Statistically, they have same percentage, approximately ten percentage, what is have German Nazi and Soviet communist. Soviet German Nazi and Soviet communist party registered every member, you know what it means? Democrat mafia don't doing this. So, right now, situation in Bellevue very interesting, you know what it means? Because this government right now in consul who re-elected and elected different people too, they cannot be legitimate, is a criminal. When hundred thirty-five, ninety percentage people not support them, how they can be a real government? Exactly, this a junta. Because all junta, what as we have experienced, for example, in twentieth century, have absolutely same statistic. People never support them, never. But Bellevue so unique in this, exactly what is I want delivery to you? Because when hundred thirty-five thousand people not support government, seven consul, you know what it means? Why they so aggressive? And I went going, I speak there, they cut me, use policemen and take me out in every meeting. Because it's very unique situation. I don't talk about Redmond Kirkland, Wesley Island, or Resikoa, because I'm not care about this too much, right now. But Bellevue have unique situation. We have a democratic mafia, a pure criminal, a pure bandita, who not support ninety percentage people. How is this possible? Can somebody explain to me what has happened with America right now, ah? What has happened with King Country, in state Washington, who totally controlled by democratic bandita, you know what it means? They are criminal, a bandita. And I will repeat this before, right now, and I will repeat this again, and again, and again. And I very appreciate you, so you not interrupt me, and don't take me out with use policemen like Bellevue doing in every meeting. I don't understand this too. What is wrong? Everything what is I talking is statistic. And I told you, you cannot touch me, because I am absolutely talk true. So, thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have David Morton, then Ari Hoffman.
Good evening, I'm David Morton. Redmond can ensure a long and prosperous future by focusing on key aspects of community development, sustainability, and innovation. First, investing in education is paramount. Redmond should prioritize the enhancement of its educational infrastructure, promoting STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics programs, to prepare the younger generation for the evolving job market. Collaborations with local tech companies can provide valuable resources, mentorship, and internship opportunities, creating a workforce that attracts and retains businesses. To ensure sustainability, Redmond should embrace eco-friendly practices, encouraging the use of renewable energy sources, implementing green building standards, and promoting public transportation can reduce the city's carbon footprint. Initiatives for waste reduction, recycling, and conservation of natural resources contribute to a healthier environment, making Redmond an attractive and responsible place to live. Additionally, fostering a vibrant and inclusive community is vital for longevity. Supporting local businesses, cultural events, and recreational activities strengthens social fabric, creating a sense of belonging. Investing in public spaces and parks enhances the quality of life and promotes physical and mental well-being. Innovation is key to prosperity. Redmond should continue to position itself as a hub for technology and entrepreneurship. Supporting startups, providing incentives for research and development, and creating a conducive environment for innovation can attract talent and investment. Collaborative spaces and incubators can serve as catalysts for creativity and breakthroughs. Infrastructure development is crucial for long-term success. Upgrading transportation systems, maintaining efficient public services, and investing in smart city technologies can enhance connectivity and convenience. Redmond should implement sustainable urban planning and affordable housing initiatives to accommodate a diverse and growing population. Lastly, civic engagement and good governance are fundamental. Encouraging public participation, transparency, and accountability in local government ensures that decisions align with the community's best interests. Regularly updating and adapting policies to address challenges fosters resilience and adaptability. By focusing on education, sustainability, community development, innovation, infrastructure, and good governance, Redmond can build a foundation for a long and prosperous future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ari Hoffman.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. The reason people are so passionate about what's going on in the Middle East is because a lot of us are parents, a lot of us are siblings, a lot of us are grandparents, and there's a lot of kids who tonight are not home with their parents because Hamas decided to kidnap them from their homes. I think that with everything going on, a lot of people have lost sight of what this is all really, really about. And I thought I'd just mention a few of them tonight. Avigale Don, four years old, kidnapped from their home. Her parents were murdered. Ofri, ten, Yuval, nine, and Uria, five, kidnapped, and their mom was abducted with them. Ariel Bebas, four, Kaffir Bebas, who's ten months old, kidnapped from a kibbutz. Emily Hand, nine. Her parents thought she was dead. Turned out she was kidnapped by Hamas. Ohad Mundar, eight, kidnapped from a kibbutz with his mother and grandparents, and his uncle was murdered. Hila Rotem, twelve, kidnapped with her mother. Agam, seventeen, Gal, eleven, Tal, nine, all kidnapped with their mother. Ella and Dafna El-Akim, eight and fifteen, kidnapped with their father. Yigal, twelve, Or, sixteen. Yakov, kidnapped from a kibbutz. Yagil has been seen in a Palestinian Islamic Jihad propaganda video. Yuval Engel, ten, kidnapped. Amit Shani, sixteen. Ophir Engel, seventeen. Yahel, three. Nava, eight. Kidnapped from a kibbutz, along with their parents. Noam Avigdori, twelve, kidnapped from a kibbutz with their mother. These are just a few of the children over forty are still missing. Two-hundred-and-forty people have been kidnapped, are still hostages of Hamas. And when you look at what everybody's so passionate about right now, this is what people are passionate about right now. Twelve-hundred people were killed in the Middle East. We have American hostages. We have Americans who were killed in the Middle East, all because of a terrorist organization that wanted to kill people. That's what it is. I thought it was important we don't lose sight of that tonight. Also, just before my time expires, I thought it was important to mention that there's a pregnant woman who was kidnapped as well, and her due date was recently. She may have had that baby in captivity. That's why people are so passionate about that, as parents, as siblings, as grandparents. It's important we don't lose sight of that. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. And next, we have -- that's all the sign-ups in person, and next we have Ronald Richards on the phone.
All because of a terror.
Hello, is this Ronald Richards?
It is.
You have three minutes to address the council.
Starting now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Ronald Richards. I'm an attorney from Southern California and in Washington, DC. There were some events in Southern California last week where Mayor Bernie's daughter was tearing down posters that were put in a public board on the USC campus of kidnapped victims. And unfortunately, the silence of the council to this event surprised many people in Southern California. And I know that Councilmember Anderson has an ombudsman report, and hopefully you can agendize this matter or come up with a statement. I mean, Councilmember Kritzer has background in ADL, and it was surprising to many constituents and people in the Southern California area and on the East Coast that when this callous act of tearing down posters of kidnapped victims, many who are American citizens, and children, and women, and there's just been a total silence by the council, it's not what's expected of elected leaders. And I was hoping that you would realize that regardless of how you may feel about the politics in the Middle East, in Israel, in Palestine, this is really a side point when you look at what someone is doing when they're taking down a poster that's posted by a family member or a loved one about an ongoing kidnapped victim. We don't take down milk cartons, and can you imagine of missing children? Can you imagine if it was some other ethnic group and you were taking down their kids' posters, and they were presently kidnapped? This would include Palestinian victims, any type of victim like this. And I'm hopeful that by looking at the presence and the outcry and the outrage online that this caused, and I'm not blaming Mayor Bernie for the conduct of Rachel Bernie, but it would be helpful because of her background in being against anti-Semitism, if the council issued a statement narrowly, not taking a position on either side, but focusing on the specific acts that created the incident and really the outrage that crossed almost every state, hundreds of thousands of views. Sometimes I think, if you're there, it may be a little insulated, but I could promise you that the matter keeps getting attention, and it would be very helpful is if a group or individually, one of you gave a statement condemning what happened. And I thank you for your time tonight, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And that ends items from the audience today. And items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, I have resolutions, many things to read into the record. So I'll start with consent item eight, resolution number 1577, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the user fee schedule for development services, user fees for fire, planning, and building, public works, water, wastewater, and stormwater effective February 1st, 2024. Resolution number 1578, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the Parks and Recreation Department user fee schedule adopted by resolution number 1072, and previously amended by resolution numbers 1140, 1181, 1201, 1267, 1392, and 1458, effective January 1st, 2024. Consent item number nine is ordinance number 3134, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, levying property taxes for the City of Redmond for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2024, on all property, both real and personal in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on general operations. Recognized voter-approved levy lifts for public safety and parks for the ensuing year as required by law. Consent item number 10, ordinance number 3155, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending ordinance number 3110, 3129, and 3130, by making adjustments to the city's 2023-2024 Binoil Budget in Exhibit 1. And consent item 11, ordinance number 3136, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Redmond Municipal Code, Chapter 310, subsection 310080B, fire impact fees schedule subsection 310080C, park impact fees schedule subsection 310080D, school impact fees and subsection 310100C, transportation impact fee schedule, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. This is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsythe.
Aye.
Sorry, couldn't find the button. Aye.
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 And that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the Redmond Flex Master Plan Development Agreement and Site Plan Entitlement. I'll read an ordinance and a resolution into the record. Ordinance number 3137, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting the technical committee's recommendation to approve the Redmond Flex Master Plan Development Site Plan Entitlement and Development Agreement, Land 2021 00474 and Land 2021 00475, and establishing an effective date. And resolution number 1579, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, approving a development agreement for property owned by Redmond, Washington 188 LLC, located on parcel number 128630-0012. And I have Carol Helen standing at the podium, but I do would like Jim Haney to talk about the quasi-judicial space we're in right now.
Thank you. Two meetings ago, I spoke to the council about the fact that this was a quasi-judicial matter, and that therefore the appearance of fairness doctrine applies to this matter. I also told you some of the questions that I thought we needed to consider and that you should answer this evening, and so I'm going to go through those in order to make the record. It may seem overkill for the proceeding that we have tonight, but we really do need to make the record on this issue so that in case there is an appeal at some point, that the record is clear. So I'd like to just ask several questions of the council and the mayor. First of all, do -- and for the council members who are online, Councilmember Khan and Councilmember Fields, if you could raise your hand so that we know if you answer yes to any of these questions. If you answer no, we don't need to hear anything. So, the first question is, do you or any of your immediate family have a financial interest in the Redmond Flex Project or in the property which is being proposed for I see no hands raised. Do you or any member of your immediate family, to the best of your knowledge, know the project applicants? Anyone on the project applicant's development team? Or any of -- any person whom you believe is a proponent or opponent of the project? I see no hands raised on that either. So the answer is no. Do you or any member of your immediate family live close enough to the project or own property close enough to the project that you received notice of this public hearing? I see a lot of shaking of heads, no raised hands, so the answer is no. Do any of you feel that the project will affect you or the place where you reside or work in a particular way that is not like the way it affects the general public? Like through traffic, through noise, that you would -- impacts that you might feel from the project itself? Again, no hands raised, so I take the answers are no. Have any of you previously expressed an opinion, either in favor of this project or against this project? I don't see any hands raised either. Have any of you talked to any of your constituents specifically about this project? Again, I see no hands raised.
Councilmember Carson?
Oh, Councilmember Carson?
Yes, so I notified someone who lives in the neighborhood of just the existence of the project.
Okay.
Through email.
And let me just follow up and ask, but did you discuss any of the details about the project, express any opinions about it?
I did not. I sent him the link to the materials we got that were publicly available.
Is there any other reason why any of you feel that you cannot treat this application I see no hands raised, so the answer is no. Putting yourself in the applicant's shoes first, if the applicant knew everything about your background and your relationship to this project, if any, is there any reason that you think the applicant would have cause to be concerned about your objectivity? Again, no hands raised, so I assume the answer is no. Now, putting yourself in the shoes of an opponent of the project, if that opponent knew everything about your background and your potential relationship with this project, is there any reason that you believe that person would have reason to believe that you might not be fair? I see no answers yes on that, so the answers to all of the questions are no. Those are all of the questions I have for the appearance of fairness doctrine. At this time, Mayor, I think it is appropriate to ask whether any member of the public or the applicant who is here tonight has any objection to any of the council members sitting as decision-makers in this matter.
Does anyone have any objection to the council members sitting in on this matter?
I see none with that. So based on that, as I mentioned to the council last time, if objections are not made to the council sitting at the time that the council makes its disclosures, then any objections based on any answers to those questions are waived. So you are, according to that, all free to sit and with no violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Haney. And just as a side note, it's great you got to do that one last time before you retire.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will turn it now over to Director Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Tonight's staff report is for the Redmond Flex Project, which is a redevelopment of a 5.82 acre site in southeast Redmond. Staff initiated the council review of this item at the October 3 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and we followed up with an additional session on October 17. Principal Planner Tim McHarg will be providing a very brief project overview, since this will be the third time that you've heard it, but we want to make sure that it's on the record for the viewing public. And then we will ask -- then the mayor will open the public hearing, we will ask the applicant to make any comments that they have, and then members of the public who wish to comment on the application. At the end of that public hearing, we are asking if the council would be ready to make a decision this evening, and an ordinance and a resolution is in your pocket. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Tim.
Thank you, Carol. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Tim McHarg, I'm a principal planner in the Planning and Community Development Department. Just want to give a quick overview of this project, since you're all familiar with it at this point. Carol stole my thunder on this slide already, so the presentation's getting a little shorter as we go. This is in southeast Redmond, the parcel's in southeast Redmond. It is essentially in the area of the Costco, FedEx. It's a transition area between the industrial uses to the north, the more warehousing and commercial uses to the west, to residential uses on the east and to the south. It's also directly north of the southeast Redmond Park site that's currently undergoing master planning. In terms of the zoning and surrounding zoning, the parcel is highlighted there, it's split-zoned. The westerly portion, westerly one acre, is zoned neighborhood commercial, and the balance of the property, the easterly portion, is zoned NDD two. To the north, you've got the gravel operation there, Heidelberg, that's also zoned ND two. Across 188th, you've got MP zoning, manufacturing park. And then to the east, you've got another NDD one parcel, that is currently undergoing development, townhome project called Woodside. And then to the south, you've got existing residential, single-family subdivision. This is the site plan, you're familiar with it at this point, just a few highlights. Because of the transition zones that were shown on the previous slide, along the east and southerly portion of the property, those are going to be heavily landscaped with solid screening to buffer it both from the park and adjacent residential uses. Another feature along 188th is an open space area and plaza that highlights the entry to the facility and provides a transition from the streetscape to the building. That plaza will be programmed with seating opportunities, food truck space, and informal gathering. Hopefully, that's going to activate the retail space at the front of the building there. And then the balance of the building is manufacturing and wholesale trade, which is being developed for flex space, and the applicant will provide a little more color about what flex space is, the type of tenants that they're actively recruiting and looking to fill the space. Parking is along the south, there's a truck-loading area that's covered in the northeast corner of the building, and that will mitigate sound and visual impacts from that truck-loading Community outreach and involvement, the project had a notice of application and then two neighborhood meetings back in May and July of 2022. We noticed this hearing, that went out on Halloween, October 31st of this year. As requested by council, that the mailing list for that particular public hearing notice was expanded to include all participants in the southeast Redmond Park master planning process, so there were about 960 mailed notices. And because it is a master plan development, there was also the large notice sign posted on the site. Just wanted to highlight, as we conclude here, some of the comprehensive plan policies that are being implemented by this project. The first there, FW 13, really focuses on economic development and making opportunities within the City of Redmond for economic development, particularly in the high-technology area and manufacturing, and so this project is going to do exactly that. Again, the second comprehensive plan policy there is talking to economic development and opportunities for those types of businesses. And then the third talks about building siting and how sites should be developed, essentially providing vegetated buffers between potentially incompatible uses to reduce that incompatibility. And then the final one is, again, a site planning policy that relates to providing public gathering spaces into developments, which this project is doing as well. And in conclusion, as outlined in the technical committee report that's part of your packet, the technical committee made findings and conclusions that it met all applicable criteria for both the master plan development, the development agreement, and the site plan entitlement. And based upon those findings and conclusions, the technical committee is recommending approval of this application, subject to the conditions outlined in that staff report. Now I'm available for questions. The applicant is here, and he's able to answer any questions as well. Their project team is available by phone, so if there's specific questions for any of those disciplines, they're available as well.
All right, thank you, Tim. Are there any questions this evening for staff? All right, seeing none, thank you so much. All right, seeing none, thank you so much. With that, I will open the public hearing. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak in person tonight. When I call your name, you'll come up to the podium, and other than the applicant, you will have three minutes to address the council. The applicant has 10 minutes, and I think Sam Blatner, am I guessing you're the applicant in this case, and you have up to 10 minutes to speak to the council, so come on up to the podium.
So I have a presentation, but I think I can also just talk, if that's easier. No, I think we're okay.
Okay. Whichever you prefer.
I'll just talk.
All right, great.
Evening. I'm Sam Blatner with Avenue 55, the developer applicant for the Redmond Flex Project. I'll touch briefly on flex development, how this building may end up functioning, the importance of its location in Redmond, and a few project benefits. First, a quick introduction of the project team. We have Weber Thompson's the architect, Sierra Construction, the general contractor, Core Design, Civil, AHBL, Structural, 10W, Transportation, SoundEarth Strategies, Environmental, Avenue 55, developer and property manager, and Broderick Group, who's the leasing broker. So flex developments have a few key characteristics, which have been a primary focus of the project team in both the site selection as well as the design process. The first is adaptive design, high ceilings, open floor plan, robust mechanical and electrical systems, freight elevator, industrial-level loading capacity to handle heavy machinery. The shell and core is really designed to meet and to suit a wide range of tenant needs without being so specialized that it restricts who the end user could be. The second's loading access. To the extent necessary, dock-high and grade-level loading makes it easy for tenants to manage inventory and shipments. Ultimately, the end user may be heavily reliant on loading access, or it may just be a nice-to-have within the building. The third's location. Proximity to urban centers is critical. It benefits businesses that want proximity to clients, a high-educated workforce, and potentially a company's existing real estate. Maybe they have existing office space in Bellevue, Redmond, or Kirkland already, and they also have a warehousing or manufacturing need, and they want the requirements to be close together. The fourth is cost and business efficiency. Demand for flex space really stems from a tenant requirement that can't merely be satisfied within an office building or a cold-shell, unconditioned warehouse. Not only are these business efficiencies, not only are there business efficiencies that can be achieved from housing multiple requirements under one roof, but it can also save the tenant a significant capital. So how might this building function, and why is Redmond an ideal location? Tenants with flex and advanced manufacturing requirements often need the space for at least of the couple following functions: testing, production, research and development, lab, warehousing, manufacturing, and ancillary office. Ideally, these functions can be accomplished in the same building. Redmond features the second-largest STEM job concentration in the Puget Sound region via firms in virtual reality, medical device manufacturing, software development, telecom, aerospace, and life sciences, to name a few. Each of these sectors has demand for flex space. The talented workforce wants to be in Redmond and is already here, as are the employers. Maintaining proximity to the target workforce and dynamic urban centers is essential for employers when thinking about where to locate flex and industrial space. The problem is available space options for Class A flex product are few and far between. With tight vacancy in the market and many active requirements, flex product has significant unmet demand. So both the workforce and the companies want to be in Redmond, but where do these tenant requirements go today? The first option is second-generation space. Touched on the low vacancy rates within the market, but to the extent available, tenants will lease existing buildings that do have vacancy. This will often require significant capital and time in order to retrofit the building to meet the tenant's needs. The second option is leave Redmond and search for space in a lower buried entry submarket, which isn't ideal for attracting employees, and in many cases, not ideal for maintaining proximity to the user's existing real estate. And the third option is the requirement leaves the Puget Sound region altogether. The thesis of this development is really all about keeping these requirements and jobs in Redmond for the benefit of the city, workforce, employers, and project itself. The project is being designed specifically for the tenants that already exist within the region and the submarket, more specifically, with their current and potential expansion needs in mind. Having said that, it's also very possible that the end user will be a new tenant to our region and submarket. A few additional project benefits is job creation in Redmond specifically, development of a longstanding, underutilized site, environmental cleanup associated with the site being an MTCA cleanup site, and our application is already in the hands of Department of Ecology for review, and consistency with the comprehensive plan as it relates to encouraging R&amp;D, manufacturing, high-technology, industrial uses in suitable areas, redevelopment of underutilized properties, integrating gathering places, and utilizing landscaping to buffer from high-intensity uses. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have David Morton, who will have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor, I'm David Morton. The Redmond Flex development is to be built in southeast Redmond on Critical Aquifer Recharge Area, or CARA 2. Redmond Flex is intended for manufacturing, wholesale trade, and commercial uses. The technical committee report on the Redmond Flex project does not indicate the specific use of the building, so it's not clear what hazardous materials will be used and stored there. No one knows who the tenants will be, what they will use the building for, or what contamination threats to the aquifer will result from the unknown activities on site. The Redmond Flex proposal involves constructing an empty building, and this proposal was found to be in compliance with Redmond's codes and comp plan and the State Environmental Policy Act. I agree that construction of this empty building is not likely to cause significant groundwater contamination. The greater concern is whether future tenants of this building will bring toxic or hazardous materials to the facility and in what quantities. Will toxic or hazardous waste be generated, and how will it be disposed of or treated? Will future tenants of Redmond Flex use the pollution prevention services offered by the State Department of Ecology? Redmond's residents, who rely on drinking water from the aquifer, absolutely should be concerned about the construction of the Redmond Flex development and other industrial buildings on their drinking water aquifer. Lack of information regarding the tenants and the types of toxic or hazardous materials that might be used and stored on site raises concerns over the potential risks to water quality and public health. Industrial, manufacturing, and commercial activities often involve the use and storage of toxic substances which may leak and spill, and the proximity of such activities to a drinking water source creates potential risks of groundwater contamination. Without transparency about the specific operations and materials involved, city officials and residents cannot adequately assess the potential risks. Redmond should prioritize transparency and engage the community in decision-making processes to address concerns and ensure the protection of the drinking water supply from potential hazards. But the lack of information about the use and storage of toxic substances at Redmond Flex raises valid concerns about potential impacts on public health, the environment, and the integrity of Redmond's drinking water aquifer. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, and I, no one has signed up to speak remotely, and the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the Redmond Flex Master Plan Development Agreement and Site Plan Entitlement?
So moved.
Is there a second, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Council President Forsythe?
Would we be able to have our staff comment on the last testimony we just heard, as far as the use of the space?
Yes, I think we can. Thank you, Mr. Harg.
Yes, so I think it's important to recognize that this is the first step in the entitlement process, so this is.
Can you move the mic a little closer to you?
Sorry, there we go, is that better?
Thank you.
So this is the first step in the site entitlement process and land development process, so it is a core and shell concept, as the applicant identified. What's important to realize is that there are several subsequent steps that are important, and those are steps where we review specifically the issues of what types of materials are being used and stored, and how are those are being disposed of or handled at the site. Typically, that's done at the building permit, during the building permit process, and also as part of the building permit process through the fire permitting process. So if there is storage of any hazard materials, how is that contained? If it presents any type of life safety risk, fire or otherwise, how are those going to be handled? What are the methods to suppress any fires or reduce risk, eliminate risks from those materials? And then also, once that building permit, tenant improvement permit is approved, and those things are done, the review process doesn't necessarily stop there. So there's the annual fire inspection process, where the Fire Marshal's Department will go out and conduct inspections to make sure that everything is in compliance with the approved fire permits operationally. And then also, when businesses change, even if they don't require a new tenant improvement permit or any other type of permit, we review the business licenses to understand the nature of the business, and if those present concerns, we get additional information through that licensing process, and if that triggers additional review for compliance, we take action at that point.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson, you do not have a question, more? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. So a bit of follow-up to Councilmember Forsythe's question, if you can. Is there anything unique or different in this location and in this property that would be a higher risk to our aquifer over some of the other developments that the city has done? Is there something with specific higher-level risks and concerns that the city would have?
The only unique attribute of this particular property is, as we discussed previously, it is a Mottca site, so it does require cleanup, voluntary cleanup, under the VCA program. And so that's the only difference, and in fact, that is providing an overall environmental lift based upon the outcomes of the project. All of that contaminated soil will be overexcavated, removed from the site, and disposed of properly. Those soils currently contain hazardous materials themselves, which are a risk at a certain level to the underlying aquifer, so that's going to improve the condition out there. In terms of it being different from any other project that would be approved in the CARA 2 area, no, there's nothing unique about this project. It's been reviewed by our natural resources staff for compliance with a variety of different city of Redmond regulations, and we are also coordinating and cooperating with the Department of Ecology relative to the cleanup of the site.
All right, thank you. And then the second question, and part of the answer has already been given here, but I just want clarity. To Dr. Morton's point about transparency and about proactive protection in the future, did I understand, I understand about fire inspection, and I understand that that fire inspection includes hazardous materials, but I think I might have missed what you said about development approval and the kinds of actions that would be taken at that time to ensure that whatever that land is used for does not pose a threat to leaching bad things down into the water that we all drink. So is there something else besides the fire inspections that mitigates the risk that Dr. Morton described?
Well, yes. In fact, there's a series of regulations in the code that involve wellhead protection that involve the CARA 2, for example, and operationally, what can happen. So those regulations don't just stop at the development process, it's an ongoing operational component to those regulations that dictate how properties can be used, what materials can be stored on certain sites, and how they can be handled. So it's not just, I didn't want to give the impression that it's just the fire permitting process, but it's an entire team of city reviewers who focus on those issues, based on the regulations that have been adopted, including the fire code and environmental regulations.
Great, thank you. I think I got distracted by the fire code thing, so appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff this evening? Councilmember Anderson?
Just a quick comment, I really appreciate the opportunity for this project to participate in the DOE's voluntary cleanup program, I think that will be great, and I'd love to hear more updates on that as that project goes forward, so thank you.
Okay, yeah, I can, we can do that. Thank you.
Any other questions this evening? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsythe. Aye.
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 And that passes 7-0, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the work. Our next item of business is Ombuds Report for the month of November, we have Councilmember Anderson.
Perfect, perfect timing, and this is for the clerk, I have a list for you, this will be pretty long. So today was the first Ombuds Report, because I skipped the earlier one this month, and I'll follow up next month with the second half of November. We've received so far 26 comments and questions regarding the Hellthrough Housing Project at Silver Cloud Inn. I wanted to say thank you to Carol Helen, who's been busy and helpful at responding to some of these items for the council and the mayor's office as well. We discussed this as a council just before this meeting, at a special meeting, so if you'd like to see that, have a look at the council meeting calendar, and you can follow up with the materials. Was a great, great presentation with King County and Salvation Army, and we'll see that back on December 5. We received 37 emails referring to the event in the first half of the month with Rachel Burney at USC. We had several comments regarding gun range noise, I also had several conversations about gun range noise near the Willow's Park area in Willow's, including a phone call that I returned from somebody who called the council in October. We had a few comments regarding screen quality and visibility on RCTV, a few comments that are different regarding traffic safety. We had one request specifically for streetlights or traffic lights at Rose Hill, in the Rose Hill neighborhood, and also one around SRR 202. We had eight comments that just came in earlier today, I've not had a chance to respond to those or within the weekend, to discuss not cutting down the tree at Motley Zoo property, it's a historic evergreen tree. I did just see a follow-up, and thank you, Ms. Kritzer, for catching that response from staff as well. We had a comment, another comment about trees and historic trees near Redmond Elementary called bent bow trees. We had a handful of emails from earlier this month about the November 8 meeting that took place virtually for the 172nd Avenue Gate project. Two more, parking access, a resident emailed us with concerns about parking access for small-business retail near Anderson Park, favorite park in town, and the Town Center Open Space Agreement was another email I just saw in today, so thank you for that, and really appreciate staff's help on the items.
Thank you. Are there any other Ombuds items, Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So I had a very long voicemail left in my box, and I contacted Captain Coats about it, and he is working the issue, and I don't really want to go into the subject matter of it, but he was familiar with the person who left it, so it's being taken care of.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Anderson?
Just a quick follow-up, we did get a specific ask from a caller earlier today, and I did write this down in my notes, but not in the Ombuds Report, a request, and I wanted to respond to that, that we will, that I've asked council leadership for their consideration related to timing and process for a potential resolution, what that might look like. At the moment, we ask that you email the mayor's office regarding the statement. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a new Ombuds, but I have a. Yeah. Thank you. I don't have a new Ombuds, but I have a question about an Ombuds that Councilmember Anderson mentioned, and also mentioned a staff response. And that is on the three trees at the Motley Zoo property. And in the response from Director Helen, the response uses the words trees, or I'm sorry, yeah, three trees from the Motley Zoo property that have been impacted by development to the east. So, the clarification that I'm looking for is, were the trees impacted by the development, or are the trees impacting the development?
I'm going to ask Director Helen to come up to clarify.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Fields. The way our code looks at trees and tree removal, tree retention, is that certain conditions impact trees that are associated with development, and those trees are not allowed to be counted towards trees that are retained. So, in this case, the foundation for the project immediately to the east is actually cutting the roots of the, one of the trees that's on the site and impacting two of the other trees. And the arborist has indicated that they need to be removed because they will be unsafe. That's, the Parks Department went through the process of requesting the removal of those trees, and will be replanting nine trees on the Redmond Central Connector.
Okay. So, for another time, I hope that when we talk about trees in the future, because that's, that's something that I was never really clear on, where development, oftentimes, we think in terms of trees being taken down because they hinder development. And then, that question is fairly clear. Now, what we have, as you described it, is development happened, and the trees are impacted. Hard for me to fathom that we didn't know that those trees would be impacted. And I know that there's nothing that can be done on this today, but I hope that when we talk about protecting our tree canopy, that that particular method of, you know, cart before the horse, or horse before the cart, whatever it is, that we talk about that with more clarity in the future.
We will certainly do that. And if you remember from the tree ordinance that the council had previously reviewed, we actually did look a little bit differently at how trees were going to be impacted and when replacement was required. And we also were proposing to increase the replacement ratio. The replacement ratio that has been proposed by the Parks Department in this case, associated with the Motley Zoo property, is actually higher than is required in our existing code, and is more in alignment with the code that will be going into effect once this comes back to council. What we understand is that the Growth Management Hearings Board, which was reviewing the council, the Kirkland Council's adoption of the tree code, has been extended again. But we do hear from both Kirkland and the master builders that they are very close to agreement and anticipate something to be approved by the end of the year, at which case, it would make the topic ripe for us to bring it back to council after we have an opportunity to review the circumstances of their settlement.
Thank you.
Are there any other Ombuds items? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I attended the online meeting regarding the gate on 172nd. And I attended the event last week that was hosted by the planning and community development staff, in particular Becky Frye, on implementing inclusive design. This was a convening of advocates and folks in planning departments all around the region, I believe as far south as Tacoma. I was lucky enough to just, you know, listen in on this event that was held for the public. And I just want to recognize for a moment Becky and her incredible leadership and passion and expertise in this area. It was very clear to me that we, the City of Redmond, are very lucky to have her, and that the conversation, especially amongst working professionals and colleagues across the jurisdictions, they were very grateful to Becky and the City of Redmond for convening that conversation, which I think will continue on. So, was happy to just be a fly on the wall. For me personally, a couple of the big takeaways that I'm still continuing to think about are the accessibility and inclusion disparities that we have between our multifamily housing requirements and our detached family housing, single-family housing requirements, especially historically, and maybe how that's gotten us to this point that we are in when it comes to our efforts to allow folks to age in place. The requirements in those two types of housing options are just so vastly different and historically have been when it comes to inclusion and accessibility. We have so many more opportunities when we get a chance to build from the ground up and do it right the first time. And again, how much everyone really appreciated the conversation. So, thank you so much. I fielded a couple of calls from a Jewish resident who had some feedback on recent events. I would also say, this is one of my favorite types of calls to get because it starts with, "I met you at Derby Days at the booth, and you gave me your card, and that's where we first met." And so, I know Jill Smith is no longer with the city, but I just really appreciate all the staff time that goes into making those interfaces available, so that when folks do have a question for their local government, they have someone to call. And I really appreciated that. I participated in a couple of meetings with staff ahead of the legislative session, so that we are ready to show our support for extended producer responsibility. And I held my office hours at the Redmond Library. We had a small business owner stop by. I was able to refer to One Redmond for some support for their creative business. I had someone stop by who's a volunteer in the emergency management program with some feedback. Also, in that conversation, I wanted to let the council know, there's a new CERT class going on this month. So, we have a new group of volunteers being trained up. And there's a Train the Trainer CERT course happening, Community Emergency Response Team. There's a Train the Trainer happening in January. So, that signals a new round of capacity building for our program here in the City of Redmond. And that's something I learned by chatting with the residents. So, I really appreciated that. Also, had some feedback about the Overlake Shopping Center, where Safeway is housed, and some of the challenges there. I will not be holding office hours this Thursday, in observance of the library being closed. But I have decided that I will continue these office hours, same schedule in 2024, and folks can continue to find that online. And lastly, Redmond Lights is coming up on, the big kickoff is on December 2. And I just wanted to say how excited I was able to chat with Lorraine Hamilton about some of the organizations that are participating that first night. And, you know, the promenade is back, as well as the silent disco. And if you've never done a silent disco in the middle of the night, okay, the late evening in Redmond with your kids, I hope everyone will come out and just have a great time with our neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President Forsythe?
Thank you. Just a couple of things real quick. I received a voicemail from a community member who was representing the Jewish community at Microsoft about the recent events, and I returned their call with a voicemail. But I heard through, there was further conversation that took place, so I'm hopeful that their concerns have been addressed. I also heard from a community member about a housing forum that was held regionally, that there was not representation from the City of Redmond, and informed that community member that that is because our staff and our mayor were at the National League of Cities Conference presenting on that same topic. So, we were presenting, but on a much larger scale. I also heard from a community member about the CERT classes that Councilmember Stewart mentioned, and their disappointment that those are only being held and offered during the day. So, it kind of restricts community members who can participate.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
I have received messages from many Jewish community members, Israeli and other Jewish community members throughout the past two weeks. And I was able to connect with several of them, as well as refer the mayor to connect with representatives at the Anti-Defamation League, as well as some other Jewish organizations, and as well as convening a listening session with some Jewish and Israeli community members, with the mayor, and some Jewish community leader representatives, just to be able to speak about antisemitism and to assure our community that hate has no home here, and in particular, antisemitism is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Any other Ombuds items this evening? Seeing none, our next item of business is committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Council President Forsythe?
Thank you. I attended the SCA Deputy Mayor's meeting. Always good discussion. We talked about all of our cities who are in representation, our legislative agendas. We are by far more advanced than our fellow neighboring cities. So, that's very exciting. It was interesting to hear that a lot of the topics are similar, but a lot of our cities are facing different issues. It was good discussion. I learned that there is a critical aquifer under the airport, under SeaTac. So, that was very interesting. A lot of conversation about that. And that aquifer is actually the size of Lake Washington. So, there's some concerns about what the airport is doing to that aquifer. Learned about the potential for a King County levy for climate action. So, stay tuned on more information about that. Really interesting having a conversation about a crisis, a climate crisis levy for King County voters to vote on. And then, we also discussed the influx of Zoom bombings, Zoom call bombings with antisemitic and hateful comments that is happening throughout the region, and how to address that, and talked about, a lot about rules of procedure for public comment, and info sharing on our recent conversations, and just sharing on what other cities do.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. And I have been sharing that information, or having discussions like that as well. And I do share with the other cities in our region how well my, our staff manage our meetings to not allow for that to happen. And so, we're going to continue doing that work, which is why we have the extra Zoom line call-in, rather than promoting people in meetings. But between teams and the Zoom line and the complicated ways we have to run these meetings, I feel like it's keeping us a bit safer than some of the other jurisdictions that don't have that capability. So, a big thank you to our staff for helping on keeping our meetings running smoothly. So, thank you. Other committee reports. Council Vice President?
I attended the One Redmond Board Meeting, and we discussed a variety of topics. One that I will note is that One Redmond is also in same day as Redmond Lights, the One Redmond Foundation. And One Redmond is putting on a children's festival and winter international festival at the Redmond Marriott. So, that's exciting. We also got an update about the TPA, the Tourism Promotion Authority that we recently formed. And it's, I think, going to be very exciting. There's some really cool ideas they're coming up with of new ways to create more heads in beds in Redmond. And it's already kind of off to a running start. So, just wanted to let everyone know that, that I think there's some really exciting things going on. And we also got to hear some updates from the Innovation Conference that they had planned, which I think several council members attended too, which I think was a big success. So, just a couple updates there. Also, attended the RIAT 8 Salmon Recovery Council Meeting, and we approved a series of innovation grants, which are a smaller series of grants designed to really help organizations that may not have as much capacity to apply for some of the big grants that typically go through RIAT 8, and might want to be kind of seeding new programs. There's a lot of really cool educational program ideas, as well as some other kind of seeds to some bigger projects that we approved funding for on that. And I think those are my two updates. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Any other committee reports this evening?
Council Vice President, did you forget one?
I did forget one, yes. Also, I just wanted to let the council know that as part of the King Conservation District Advisory Committee, I've been engaging with other council members and with KCD around discussions on their renewal of the ILA that funds KCD. And we're going to be working on that in the year ahead. But if anyone has feedback on the way that they could best engage with cities, they've been really reaching out to us to find out how they can best get feedback on that process.
Great. Thank you. Council President Forsythe?
It's not a committee report. Just a reminder, since we were not able to have our conversation about the budget forecast, that that will be moved to next week. So, get your questions into Kelly.
Thank you for the reminder. Appreciate it. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Our last item is the executive session of potential litigation, RCW 4230-110-1I, for 15 minutes. We will adjourn to the executive session, and then we will come back to open session to take expected action after the 15 minutes. So, I'm going to give everyone a couple of minutes to get over to the other room. We will start the executive session at 8:15, and we will end the executive session
Log out of the meeting.
Are we live? Are we live? Okay, thank you. And we are back. Is there a motion? Councilmember Anderson?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents to opt out of the PFAS settlements with 3M and DuPont.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote starting with Council President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 And that passes 7-0. Thank you all very much. That concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great Thanksgiving.